...of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. Today, we are doing our second strategic planning retreat. And Terry's been guiding us along the way, so I'm going to turn it over to our county manager.
I'm going to take my mask off so everybody can actually hear me. Thank you for joining us in person. We appreciate it. I think it's going to make for a much more engaging conversation, which is what the aim of today is. You know, we've gone through a number of different processes, including our most recent survey, just to get a constellation of the issues that the board is thinking about for next year. And then we have to take that constellation and then start framing it into some priorities. Because as we all know, the constellation is much greater than our ability to actually visit any given planet now within it. So we're going to be narrowing that down, and then staff will go back and do some additional work, and then bring this year's, next year's strategic plan to your board for your consideration and approval. So that is basically the action plan that's going to drive staff's work. Now, what I will say, and I think everybody knows, is that that doesn't drive all of staff's work. That just drives some of staff's work. Every year, we always do a number of other projects and a number of other initiatives that just have to get done. Sometimes they just come up unexpectedly. Sometimes it's just some of the work that the organization needs to do, you know, like space planning or class and compensation reviews, union negotiations, all kinds of different things. And so all of that work is also going to be done. And so I sent out a project list to the board last week that Amanda prepares for us, and it documents both the strategic projects that the board has identified and what the status is, but it also lists all those other projects that I talked about. And so, you know, part of what the balancing act, for me, sitting in the county manager's chair, is how to support the board's agenda, getting you the successes, getting you the accomplishments that you want, and at the same time, being able to then allocate the resources, the staff time, to do those things, hopefully doing well. And that's part of us building the capacity of the organization to actually get this done. We're fortunate that we've been investing in some staff that can help us do this, so that's an exciting piece of it. But my kind of, you know, overview is that it's a very complicated and nuanced environment as we talk about priorities and as we actually execute them. Because, as you know, it's a never-changing environment. Just over the last two years, we've been dealing with something that would have never came up if we did a strategic planning session back in, you know, 2019. I don't think anybody said pandemic would be something that we'd be dealing with. And so, we never know. We always try to remain flexible. But at the end of the day, it's to support your board's priorities. It's to help you get down to the public work that you feel is important and feel that you're aligned with staff. There's not one moment that I want a misalignment between the board and staff. And so, so this, part of this process is to make sure that that doesn't happen. And then part of my role is to let you know all the other things, just so you know that there's a lot of other things pulling at a foothold. So Terry is here to kind of walk us through, again, it's meant to be participative, interactive today. And then we hope to have enough where staff can then come back to your board and have you consider a final version of the action plan for next year. So that's kind of where we are. Is there any questions about that? Richard Thompson.
Because you knew I would have a question, sir. Well, colleagues, when I got the report from staff, of course, I'm always grateful and impressed with the work that they do. And then I thought to myself, wouldn't it be lovely if the board work were also captured so that we had more effective teamwork with the staff and better communication with each other and the staff and the public? I don't know if that's within Amanda's bandwidth, because my vision and anybody's capacity, including my own, I can imagine more than I can do. And so I don't want to over-imagine the role of staff. But when I saw all of those wonderful projects and I thought of the ways that I or other colleagues had been involved with them, I thought it would be more effective teamwork, and that's what I'm looking for.
And I think, to respond to Commissioner Thompson, is that we can certainly do that. I know that there's a lot of interests and projects that the board's working on, and we can add that to our project list, just so that there's visibility on some of those as well, which can help the board know what other board members are doing, and helps the staff know too. What I sent out admittedly was kind of the staff circle, but we can expand it, so. So that's it for me, Jeff Guila. If there's no more questions for me, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Terry. And I probably said some of what you were going to say.
No, that's, I guess, the protocol is that if I stand this way around, they'll get to take off my mask.
Oh, please.
That is so great. I got, you know, I am particularly glad to be here with you, but quite frankly, I know I was going to drain Oregon for a water board meeting just to get out of the house and have to meet on the public event again. So this is my first time out in two years, and it's just really good to be here with the folks that I already know. So today, I'm going to, I'm going to take, we said about five minutes, I might take a little bit more than that, just to make sure that we're oriented, but then it's going to be your time to start getting down to the details of what we're up to. So let me take you through just a brief overview of this within your packet. But here we go. First of all, this is where, this is where you were on, this is Don. This is the original strategic plan here, and this is different. We did a situation assessment, decision making, decided on the five focus areas, the same five focus areas over there, and then here's the strategic plan. And that was your 2021, 22 strategic plan, and that's what we're in the process of updating. That update started last fall, and now we're about to finish it. And here, we have an annual update, and what we decided last fall was that these things did not need updating. They would be revisited every three to five years, and so we're still staying in the same focus areas, but the strategies are going to change. And they're going to change, number one, because you've already completed some of them, and number two, because as Don pointed out, things have changed. So that's where we are right now. This is your existing plan. That's in your packet. That's just a reminder of the values, vision, and ambition that you put together. And then here's a reminder of kind of the details of the focus area. Again, the same ones that are on the wall over there, and what we're going to be talking about today. The timeline, here's, you know, here's the old, getting the old plan done, and then now getting that started with you. And we started back in the fall, getting a list of 83 priorities from survey results, and then that got narrowed down to 13. That's what we talked about at the last, and then we got to the first retreat, and a bunch of others came out of that, and decided, well, let's do a survey, so that we did a survey, and then Amanda did a bunch of work looking at the survey that we'll talk about in a minute, that narrowed that down to a smaller set, so that you could talk about those today, and we hope today at this meeting, make some decisions on that. So that, in a nutshell, is where we are. And here's the way we have decided to organize today's activities. Now, the, there's a lot about, a lot about COVID to dislike, but almost with every challenge, there's always some benefits, and one of the benefits of COVID was no dots. Today, the dots are back. So we're going to have you putting dots up there, but dots but no shots. So we're going to get some stuff up there. And I just think, I think you've done so much work in the background that, not facetiously now, the virtue of the dots is that it allows you to see in very quickly what things you agree on and what things you don't agree on, so you don't spend half of the meeting time talking about the things you agree on. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to get them up there, see what we got, and we don't know, and presumably you don't know yet either. So we're going to do an exercise, and I'll explain it when we get there. The short version is that we're doing an exercise, two exercises on activities, and then an exercise, excuse me, on objectives, and then an exercise on action, on activities. You're going to have a set of dots, 20 dots, and you can put wherever you want. And then after you look at that, then you're going to come back and try to fill in by activity area, or by what we call a focus area or objective. And then after that, then we'll get some ideas from you about actions. I'll explain that a little bit more. But first of all, I want to put this up here just to make sure that we all agree on what we mean by actions and objectives, because different terms get used a lot, and this, I think, is a good way to kind of get oriented. Think about objectives as what you want to achieve. What does the county want to achieve? And the typical hierarchy that is really general stuff, called goals or principles, and you get down to more specific objectives, and in the end, you get down to valuable indicators. But for our purposes, let's just say that we're calling them objectives. And what that means is that we're trying to get down to these, and we've got these focus area priorities, now we're trying to look at what are the objectives within those focus areas or priorities, okay? But then, what do we do to achieve it? And when these things often get confused, and you don't want to, and we don't want to confuse here, what you want is typically a governance issue and something that a board does. What you do to achieve it is often a management issue and something that staff does. And then there's an interface between them where the board says, well, to meet that objective, we really want you to consider actions like these. The actions are things like planning, so you can do studies, do assessments, and often that is what you do, because the message from the board or the staff is, we don't really know enough about that yet to have a coherent policy to adopt or regulate or something. And so, and then you might find that you need funding for it. So there are issues of fundraising and getting dollars. And then another action then is, once you've planned it, you know, you've got an objective, you know what you want to do to achieve that objective, you've got funding for it, now you're making investments, you're getting incentives, you're doing regulations. And here, you've got things like, you know, you've got programs that you put in place, and you've got facilities that you build and things like that. So those are what the actions are, and these are what objectives are. And just to show that in the world that you want of policymaking and good governments, you want your, you want to eventually have some evaluation criteria that allow you to pick out the activities that are going to achieve the desired outcomes in the best way, and the best way is a value judgment, but usually it's something that's efficient within legal and meets various criteria for fairness, equity, et cetera. So that's, that's just overview. The next steps, Don already talked about, so I'll take this very quickly. You're going to get the strategic plan done very soon, and then you, as our staff, and you'll review it, and then it gets adopted at a meeting. And ideally, we want this done as soon as possible, so this can start feeding into your budget process. Because the cycle that we want to be on is one where you have a strategic plan, you know, we were hoping, in the ideal schedule, it's going to be by the end of February. Here we are in early March, so we're about a month off. But you have a strategic plan, and then as your budget committees are going through stuff, they know that things that are in your strategic plan are going to need budget. So, and you've told them that. Whoops, sorry. So here's where we are today then. This is also in your packet. This is the exercise. These are the approximately 40 items, if you'll be aware, that came out of your survey. So we had a meeting by Zoom. There was a lot of discussion that went on. Amanda was taking notes. You might remember a bunch of graphics that we were putting together while we were trying to get your ideas in, and there was a lot to it. At the end of it, the decision was, there's so much there that we ought to really poll the commissioners to see what they think now, because you really ended up with a slight, a list that was different enough from what we leaned the first time, that was worth going through again. So you all took that poll, and then Amanda spent some time going through that. What she did is enter a packet, and I'm going to just flip to it, but I'm not going to go through it in detail. There were, you know, you voted and said whether, you know, what focus, what your ranking was of that objective, and then we did think, she did think like this. Time infrastructure, for example, what, how many first-place votes were there, second-place votes, et cetera. And then between Amanda and me, we said, well, what are we going to use for cutoff points here? But the logic is pretty, there's lots of ways it could have been done, but in general, for your purposes, our votes don't really make any difference. All you need to know is what we did was, is if you got a lot of first and second-place votes, it made it high up on the list, right here. And if you got, if you didn't get any votes, it ended up far down on the list. So what you're looking at up here and on that sheet over there are the things that we think you have the most agreement about. And usually, that means that there are at least three and probably four votes at some level for this. If you got three first-place votes and no other votes, you'd probably make it up to the top. But if you got, and if you got, you know, two second-place votes and three third-place votes, you probably might make it to the top too. But that way into the top no longer makes any difference. It's just here so that we could get this list for you, because it's your votes today that make a difference, and that's what we're about to move to. So I'm going to leave this up there, but we're going to move right into the exercises. The first, okay, questions?
Okay. So childcare and housing occur in a couple of different categories. I'm concerned that if we don't have a more general category, that they'll drop down because the votes for them are divided.
So, so, Commissioner Thompson, you're saying that, you said, I heard housing, what was the first?
Sorry. Childcare and housing.
And broadband.
And broadband, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so broadband, and this is the issue we talked about before. You got, you can move it up. I don't have enough expertise in your area to know the best way to do that. But in other, I just talked about that when we're doing other plans. In other plans, something has made it to the top in round one, I'll call it Plan One, and a lot of work was done, and now some momentum is there. Allocations have been made to staff, other public partners are working on it, and it feels like it's solid enough that that's going to go ahead. And I'm not saying this is broadband, I'm just using it as an example. It's solid enough that that's going to go ahead, and it doesn't need the attention of the full commission in this strategic plan anymore. An alternative is to say, it's pretty solid, but there are still some key things for the commission to do, and if we don't stay involved in this, we need to, you know, it could go off the rails. That's the kind of decision that you have to make today. All we did right now is say, what we said up here was, we're not going to put, we're not going to put five in anything, and given the criteria we use, broadband made it down to fifth. That doesn't mean that broadband can't come up to number one if that's what, and that will be your discussion today to make those choices.
What I would say is that broadband is on a feed list, so it's one of the priorities. You've got your little stickers, and you just put it on it. So this is kind of a reset now.
Yeah.
So we're starting over based upon, that's based on that complete set, and now the board gets to kind of look at it with a clean slate and say, what are those things?
I think to Commissioner Thompson's point, she's looking at infrastructure, economic development, social services, all those are, housing's under each one of those categories. And so it can get diffuse if you're not, you know, kind of combining it.
We can consolidate those. So, and as we go through that, we can do that, for this consolidated housing, and childcare is meant to be one, and, you know, housing can be one.
And so, last thing I'll say about this is, my hope is that the way you'll think about this is, after you do the first exercise and you get to put up, each of you will have a different color of dots, and it's got your initials on it, and you've got 20 of them. And you can put those anywhere with one exception. You can only, the rule that I impose is only one on your, you can't load up an objective with 20 dots, okay? But after you do that, again, what I want you to understand is, that's not the end of it. There's nothing firm about that. That is now something that you can look at. What I hope, what I hope happens is that you see a lot of commissioner dots more toward the top than toward the bottom. And if that's true, then you'll start to see things that, well, under, if we're going to end up with 10 or 10 to 15 priority ones here, it's pretty clear that some of these five are definitely going to make it no matter what. And, and the other thing that you'll see is that you're not, that you can see where other commissioners have put stuff, so that when you come to your final priority, you're listing in this second column that we have over here. I'm looking at this one right here. This is your first column. In the second column, the second exercise, you'll say, well, of all the things here, now I've got fewer dots, which ones am I going to rate highest here? And so at that point, if you're looking at all the commissioner dots up here, except for your two down here, then I want you to think carefully before you put your dots down here and say, this is what I think the priority should be. Because you might want to consider that, you know, where everybody else is thinking. I'm not saying you can't, I'm just saying that's the purpose of having this up there. Yes, Commissioner James?
Just looking at one thing in particular for myself, I look at proper dumping of septicage, and then the other three headings underneath of that, and I feel like that they should be separate. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Tell me, tell me.
Because I would bring environmental quality.
Environmental quality.
Why are there so many subheadings under, under one title?
I agree with that.
Those are all separate, all of those tied according. So those are all separate.
Oh, okay. Okay, so they're not subheaded, okay.
Similarly, if you look at governments, there's two under sixth place.
Okay.
So those tied for sixth place. I'm sorry.
And they're all up here distinctly.
Okay, separate, okay. Thank you for that.
So there, you'll know that they'll say multiple, you'll see a sixth for charter of pay review, and then sixth place for performance measures. So up here, I couldn't, and up there, I couldn't put them side by side. And so just know when you're looking at this, because, you know, this one's the sixth place and it's on top, it doesn't mean that it got more than this one at sixth place, they're favorably ranked.
I was really struggling on why they were, the way they were. Thank you.
And then, to be clear, once we get through exercise one, which is mainly kind of straw vote, pulse-taking, when we get to exercise two, and you put your dots up, it is not over. Those are, I will then go through it and say, where am I seeing a lot of agreement? Where am I not seeing agreement? Then you can have discussion about that, and you can decide what you want to do, and then at the end, we're going to let Don go through it and say, okay, here's, given the staff view on this, this is what I think we got. So the idea is to end today with an agreement on priority one and priority two items, and then the final exercise will come up to us. And your ideas about, but not votes on, actions that you might want us to think about within those objectives. And then we're set to be able to write a draft plan for it. And so for me, this is a perfect coming-out party. This is something that would have been hard enough here in person, it would have been impossible to try to do via Zoom. So I'm just glad that we're all here. Are there, yes?
Question, you know, is we did the survey before, you know, one thing came up at the final, is like we did economic development. And I look at capacity for growth. And in that, you had other items, such as childcare, workforce housing, and none of these are mutually exclusive there. I think if we have a broader category such as capacity for growth, within that capacity would be childcare, would be housing, would be, so I mean, I know these other subcategories, these other headings were, they're all underneath. So when I did the, you know, the evaluation, I kind of discounted childcare, discounted workforce housing, saying it should be covered under capacity. So was, I don't know, but skewed the...
Well, so, but the good thing is, is that the survey is now over, and now it's a clean slate, and so the board can kind of, you know, decide what those priorities are. And then in our report, we can categorize them differently if there is a way that may make more sense. And because some of them are kind of capacity, you know, to accommodate growth, generally speaking, or to deal with just underserved populations also. I mean, there's, there are things we can do to kind of, you know, move them around and categorize them differently, and we're totally open to that. I think if we could get a list of the objectives, then we can figure out how to present that in the most meaningful way, if that helps.
Yes, yes, we can. To that end, it would be, as I said, if we could say capacity is our focus, as long as it's agreed that the subcategories, housing, childcare, everything, falls underneath, because those all affect our capacity.
Looking for synergy.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good point, commissioners, and a number of commissioners have also raised this, is that the categories can be limited, because you really feel like you should put it in two or three categories, and then there's overlap between multiple objectives and two or three categories, so it can get confusing pretty quickly. So, so we will, as we get to the objectives, we'll try to kind of clarify how to present them in a way that's more cogent and more, more aligned, so.
Okay.
Okay. If that's okay with everybody, then what I'd suggest, since we're dumping this exercise on you right now, why don't you take just two or three minutes to look at the material that we've got, and then when you're ready, go up, and we're doing the 20-dot left-hand column exercise. So there should be the dots that have, all one color, that have your initials on them. Those are the 20 that go up, and Amanda will be up here, and I will be up there on the side to make sure. And when you're ready, just come on up and put them down, and then we'll sit together.
No, not, but we did a weapons review, but we didn't do a, we didn't create a mitigation ban. Part of that story, I think, a long time ago.
How do you feel about that?
I think that's pretty important, right? I'm putting it online.
Because it seems like we ought to.
I'm putting one on.
I know, I know.
I never thought, I thought Mark and I were going to be on.
Well, and.
I'm good. Friday, I have to watch girls' my, I guess, taking off. Girls' weekend, or an educator. It was my birthday. You have a retreat down at Talashan Hospital.
Yes. I know. Oh, he's timing you. I think, I think we shouldn't hand you this. You're being fine.
Okay, does anybody still put the dots up?
Yes.
Okay.
You didn't use all your dots. Do I need to use your dots for you?
Okay. Anybody still put the dots, go ahead, but let me, let me sum up here on next steps. So you can see what's up there. And I'm going to talk for like one or two minutes and then I'm going to, and then it's your discussion before you go to the next exercise. Because what I want you, so a couple of things came up while we were doing this. And I just want to point out to you. First of all, as you can see, it's kind of working out the way we were hoping. Lots of agreement across the top and occasional stragglers, some here and others across the top. And then what came up is a couple of things you can already list it. Like here is analysis of carrying capacity and cost needed expansion to accommodate growth. And here is analysis of county's capacity for growth. So this is getting three votes, this has five votes. Possibly, you know, we can figure out, look at this, is this really part of this or can we bring it together? The other thing that showed up, some of the housing stuff is starting to resolve itself. A lot of housing stuff right here together, these can be combined possibly. So we'll think about all that. But now there are others here that, what I'd like you to do now is probably not talk about these things where you've got four or five votes. But come down here on some of these others. And if anybody's down, say, you know, just go around the table and say, well, look, I've got, I've got one down in sixth place, but I really think that's important for these reasons. And I'd like people to consider that when you come to this final stuff up here. That's the discussion to have now. So I think.
Can we walk over there so we can read it?
Yeah, yeah, this is for you to do however you want. Chair Quinlan, maybe I'll just leave it to you to.
Sure.
To talk to your members and let them do it in whatever order you think is best.
Okay. Should I come over and then just read off the ones that have?
Is that common? I can do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds fabulous either way.
Yeah, just take your mask off so I can read your lips.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that invitation. So under governance, we obviously have kind of grouping on the first three. The fourth one that had one from Commissioner Thompson is to review and update board rules. The next one is from Commissioner Thompson, it's the charter committee review. The next is from Commissioner Webb, that's performance measurements. And then the other one is from Commissioner Webb, that's youth advisory board. Go ahead.
I think that the.
Take your mask off for us so I can hear you.
I think what confused me in this exercise prior to it was, I thought that some of them were just small things. They weren't policy objectives. And for instance, the youth advisory board, which to me is, it's got to be a subset of something, of good governance, of increasing, one of the things I did see survive there all the way, I just didn't recognize it, was that we did have extensive conversations about just kind of communication better and, you know, and opening up and how we make the county more accessible to our citizens, et cetera, et cetera.
That was the intention.
That's what they're, okay, so, okay. Because to me, if I use advisory board, could we have also said.
Could fold into it.
So for some of these, that could be one of the action items.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, part of what we'll be talking about a little bit later is the action items. So what it could be is that the youth advisory board is actually an action item under that one.
I would agree.
Just like, under the homeless and affordable housing, it should is micro housing, maybe in action while under that policy.
Yes.
So we will, you know, kind of re-characterize some of those as we go through them.
Yep.
So that's a good part of.
And I feel the same way about performance measures. Because to me, performance measures is sort of how our county manager structures the budget and supervises the staff. To me, it's more of that, it's a larger issue.
Yeah, and what I, yeah, and what I would say like with the performance measurements, it was on the list last year and we've actually done some internal training and we're starting the deep process. But it's gonna, it's like a lot of things right now, it's gonna take us time and iterations. So what I would say is that, is that like with the performance measurements, that is on our project list now. And it's gonna stay on our project list. So it's something that legislature board may decide not to carry forward as a, as an objective for next year, just knowing it's a continuation for staff.
On your point, Commissioner Webb, I definitely understand what you're talking about. And I'm just going to pile on here very briefly. As a technician, performance measures have to be there somewhere. Okay, they don't have to be, but they don't have to be in your strategic plan. Somebody's got to be doing performance measures. So the real question is, is there, is there a big enough concern here? Let's make it counterfactual. The county's never done anything on performance measures before, everything's falling apart. And the board says unless we get involved with this thing and work with staff, we're not going to have anything. That's not your case. You've been doing it before. As Don points out, there's a lot of work that's been done with PSU on that. So performance measures would then get incorporated into some of the top three items for sure. But it's really a question of whether we need a special, a special board intentional performance measure.
So could I just segue in? For me, when I looked at performance measures, there's something I hold myself accountable to. Just, that's part of my professionalism. So I'm always evaluating myself against what are my outcomes? I don't know how that fits in with Terry's thing about, oh, the board sets the policy and the staff implements. Because in my mind, what I've seen over the time I've been on the board is an evolution so that board members are more engaged in relationships that promote the staff efficiency and effectiveness. And that's often the relationship with other bodies that's in there. So I don't know how we, it's not, it's a multi-dimensional, as you pointed out, Commissioner Baines. If we're looking at this, we've got some higher up in the administrative hierarchy, but also as Commissioner Webb says, there are certain things that happen just naturally as part of the implementation of all of it. So we've got a lot of different kinds of physics going on in this, in terms of action and results. Okay, good.
There's a lot of nuance that goes in, into this, a lot of connective tissue opportunities that really drive whether or not we're doing the work in an efficient and effective way. And one that really affirms the complexity of the relationships and all the different roles. And so I think that we can tease out some of that as we work through this. And to be honest, we've been teasing that out for the last couple of years. And we'll continue to.
Yeah.
So then, real quick, is the board rules and charter committee, which you, the Commissioner Thompson mentioned?
Well, again, I'm looking at what's the, I'm a radical, I look to the root causes. When I look at Clatsop County, we're one of two counties in Oregon that have volunteer commissioners. We're in a structural disadvantage because we have volunteers. We have people who have to have another job or a pension to be able to do the work to represent the needs of people in Clatsop County. It's an uphill climb. So I want to have that conversation that we had a generation or so ago about should the county commissioners receive payment for what they do? Because not doing that means that those of us volunteers either have to take care of our families and our other jobs, or we have to wait until we're old enough to have a pension, or we're lucky enough to have a trust fund. Otherwise, we reduce the pool of available commissioners and I would argue reduce the caliber of the output. I'd like to have that conversation with our, with the people in Clatsop County about that. That's the charter review piece. The other piece is the board rules. That's, those are our rules of engagement. It's how we do what we do with each other toward one end. And that's why I, that's why I like those kinds of things. It helps us consider how to be efficient and effective.
And the good news on the board rules is that it's part of this year's plan. And we actually have the schedule that happened this fiscal year is to start it. So that is going to perform this fiscal year.
Okay. Cool.
So then we go with the infrastructure again. You have a lot of commonalities at the top, including down the Westport Ferry Access Road. Then number five is the broadband, analysis of the carrying kind of capacity and cost of needed expansion to accommodate growth, so that had, that had three. So broadband and the analysis for carrying capacity, so.
I just wanted to make note that I do think, think that broadband folds into something else. And so that would be why I did place a dot there. And so I just wanted to make note of that.
And I think one thing that we can do too in the actual plan is to carry forward some of those that were in last year's plan, because broadband's going to be with us for.
Well, I, I saw.
For a while. And it's on our project list, I know if you look at, at the commissioners' project list, it's on theirs also. So I think that when we write it, we can just carry forward some of these. So we'll just keep carrying forward until it's not an issue. But we're already working on it, obviously we're going to have, and then we're having individual meetings for charter to find out if they're going to do it. Commissioner Thompson had the first one, that was in the name, so.
I chewed pretty well on it, Ben. Well, it turns out I'm his customer, so I have a lot to say.
I don't know if he showed up for, for work the next day.
Oh.
We're going to find out.
Oh.
So I think there's a lot of agreement that we will carry that one.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
And then under economic development, we have a lot of agreement, economic development strategy, that's with Steer. economic development strategy, that's with Cedar, Coal Pack, and CSAC. Analysis of county's capacity for growth, again, it's similar to the carrying capacity, so that's obviously a priority for the board. Evaluation of the regulatory barriers and gaps, that's something that we started, we went to talk about last year. Increased workforce housing inventory, it really comes back to the housing issues too, with some of the strategies. And so, that could, can be one of the action plans under that housing. Then we drop down, and there's two for support of available and accessible childcare options. Again, I think childcare is over here before, so I think childcare is a priority, so that one is, I think, captured there. Commissioner Webb?
Can I comment? I think that one of my problems with doing regulatory barriers and analysis, try to down the other category, is that we are not alone. In fact, we are the least impacted by... County regulations impact economic development about the least amount of any other state in the county. So, to me, there's a very heavy, I mean, nobody's gonna build an industrial park in a county again. I hope ever again, but it's not gonna be in unorganized Clatsop County. So, to me, that's a very, very heavily city-related thing. And that's one of the reasons that I didn't prioritize it, because I just felt that, to me, it's more part of cooperating with other local jurisdictions in a way that is meaningful and constructive and not antagonistic. And so, to me, it's part of another, of another issue. Because we can't talk to cities about housing unless we talk about industrial and commercial site. You know, so we have to, to me, I just wanted to sort of think that, another one of those ones to take and put within another county. It's not that I don't support it, it's just that I don't think it's important.
Thank you, Commissioner. There are comments about, about these, and very high that the last one was the toolkit of business incentives.
I just wanted to comment on that. I feel like without that, I mean, we're trying to become more appealing to businesses, opening new businesses, small and large, and having a plan, you know, to make us more attractive to incoming business, I feel like is really important, because without economic development, we can't support any of this. And so, I mean, I feel like I personally heavily weighted economic development, just because it's going to pay for everything else. And if we don't have it, then, then I think we're up a creek without a paddle.
Well, I think, again, this is part of kind of an action plan that goes into the economic development strategy piece. So, I think we can probably put that in.
So, what you're saying is, my dots could have gone somewhere else.
No, I thought, hey, I thought my dot there too, but...
It's just a job you set.
Your dot was super important to let us know that it may be an action item.
I think it needs to be listed, I agree with Courtney. I think you're, part of being open for business is advertising what the benefit coming to Clatsop County is, working with Cedar and Coal Pack, and, you know, just having those things out there.
And that's part of it here too, by the way, so even here, what your board's thoughts are, and if we could figure out the action part of this.
Yeah.
Point of clarification here, this part seems pretty important to me. What Commissioner Webb said, I think is important, and it fits up here, is his economic development study strategy with, you know, some of the players who have potentially a bigger role in the county, but who might not be able to succeed without county support. And so, if, and there's four dots up here, if you agree with that, then a lot of these things become what things would be in the strategy that we need to pay attention to. And if you're thinking about it that way, then, so that's point one. Point number two was this one, I think I brought up, analysis of your carrying capacity and cost of needed expansion to accommodate growth, analysis of county's capacity for growth. This is under infrastructure, this is under economic development. Did you get to a point on how, on how you think we are proposing the other? Or do we put those together, or are these shepherded out?
I think that they're the same. I mean, in my view, just the way that I see this and the way we would approach it is that, is that as we look at the carrying capacity for expansion, it's very similar to the capacity for growth. I mean, I think they're the same thing. And not surprisingly, they're both an infrastructure issue and an economic development issue, because a lot of those are hand in hand in the county. You know, there are infrastructure issues that need to be part of the consideration as we grow. And there's just, yeah, there's a lot that needs to be discussed. I mean, we have a lot of real, real-time examples of this, like with the side stream issues that the breweries have right now. It's a nexus between economic development and some of the huge investments that have been made, and the fact that they can't stick any of their side stream into the sewer systems. So, I mean, there's a real nexus on a lot of that. So, I would see them similarly, and I think as we develop a draft, we can, we can figure out how to, how to express that and really integrate a number of these, so that they don't seem like the percent of silence, they're all contributed. So, I think we're good to move on to the next one. So, under environmental quality again, we have some of the groupings, and then we have some that are standalone. One of the standalones would be environmental studies, which was John, Commissioner Toyoka. And then, we have some clustering around property of septic, which is something that, as you know, that is active with the subduction event preparation, which is, like, Commissioner Thompson, county wetland bank creation, Commissioner Quayle, and then septic system and alternate systems for environmental impact, Commissioner Webb. And again, some of these relate to growth too, and infrastructure, so we'll have to look at consolidating on some of those. As we breathe through all those, breathe through the particulars of each other, I looked at it in terms of analysis of our capacity for growth, and environmental studies, and everything else, every other listed item would be actionable under those two main headings. Even environmental studies, AOC, everything no longer is studies. So, I felt that we had two items, really, and everything else was, even on this list, was actionable.
Yeah, I think that mine can be lumped in with others. I just, you know, the wetland bank creation, you know, is not just an environmental one, it's an economic development issue. You know, one of the biggest limitations and constraints we have is wetlands, and the fact, I mean, these aren't low-lying areas, these are areas like North Coast Business Park that has pockets of wetlands, and they're not quality wetlands. So, if you could actually do a project that would develop quality wetlands, be able to sell credits out of it, allow for some flexibility in development, that could be a huge thing, and I think you could achieve both, both aims.
Are you good with that too?
Yeah.
So, we're good with, I think we have the environmental quality. So, the next is social services. And again, we have clustering, including childcare, crisis stabilization center. And crisis stabilization center is a health issue, where we don't have any crisis beds in the county. It's a big, it's something that CBH deals with, CMH and the other hospital deals with. And we have homeless initiatives action, so this is where we get into that blending between the homeless and the microhousing. So, I think that these are all interrelated, those two, and probably microhousing. That could be, as we talked, probably an action item for the housing, so... They're all clustered at the top, so...
Oh, my dog. There's a tow truck, and my dog is in a car.
Oh, they're towing our car.
Yeah, it's a tow car.
Towing the county cars.
Towing the county cars.
Okay, so, before we move on to the next step, does any commissioner want to add any points to this so far, to what's been said so far?
I didn't put, I didn't put a dot on economic development training for the board members, but if I can think of one actionable item, that would be it. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that. Because I think if we have a shared language and a shared methodology...
Don't we know everything already?
Oh, that would be you, that's not me, you're the chair, I'm only the vice chair, kidding.
I'm joking.
I jokes, I jokes. So, that's, that's what I'm gonna do, for the number, just to your point. If we can have broad categories, what supports our effectiveness in those broad categories? Because if we don't have economic development, none of this works.
I think the only thing I focus on when I'm doing plans like this is to make sure that any public funding that we're pushing a certain direction means that we're actually gonna move the needle somewhere. I don't wanna push public funding somewhere where we're not gonna have any impact or be unable to move the needle. I feel like as a county, that's our purpose, and that's our goal, is improvement. And so, as we move forward, you know, I think all of these things are important. I think all of these things are important, but I have to weigh, what can I actually impact as a county? So, that's, that's my thought process.
To that point, that's why performance measures are critical. Because if you're not measuring what you're doing, then you don't really make sense.
Commissioner Webb, while upon that, you put, you voted for performance measures three times.
Yeah.
And so, do you...
We're talking some rules?
No, I have a question, I have a question. We had a little bit of discussion about, well, and Don responded, well, we already, we've got a lot going on with performance measures now, we're not gonna lose those. Does that make you comfortable, or does your bringing it up again mean, I really do think that it's something that needs to be on the board's...
No, no, not at all, I was just agreeing with Commissioner Baines. Because I think that that's, that there's, you know, that's how you measure effectiveness in government.
Got it.
And I, and I've been yelling at Don for the last two and a half years about the performance measures. So, I feel pretty confident, as bruised as he is on the left side of his face where I stand, that I think he's got it.
And this is something that, that we are making progress on, and it's gonna be iterative, especially as we tackle some of these policy issues and major program issues. We'll be thinking about what that performance measurement linkage is as we actually develop it, so that we can measure that. Because I think, to Commissioner Baines' point, is that, you know, we certainly, at the staff level, are completely committed to making sure that every dollar is spent on substantive and outcome purposeful measures. And so, so we're all on the same page with that. And I think that the more, you know, we can measure and monitor that, the better we will be solving it.
And to answer your question, to our question, I'm very content with that.
Okay, well, then, what I'm seeing is, a lot of the commissioners are nodding on that point, so I guess the minutes should show that everybody agrees that performance measures are important, but that there's work being done on them, and maybe not necessarily. If they don't make it to the final list in this revised strategic plan, it doesn't mean that nobody's working on performance measures.
They will be on the project list, I'm sure.
Commissioner?
Question, not just whole thing, though, is we're looking at a strategic plan, you know, it's about policy. And then, we're getting a bridge gap between policy and procedure. So, a lot of the items are procedural, not policy. So, you know, this is focusing on policy, correct?
Yes.
And then, it's up to staff, and to, translate to policy or procedure.
Then, and you're, you're onto it, there's a, there's a fuzzy line there. And to me, the way I try to make sense of the fuzzy line is to say, it is, for a board member to say, do we have some significant problems here that are best resolved quickly and well by getting the board involved at a policy level? Or are those problems already being resolved at the procedural level by management as part of the system? And so, that's, you know, that's, that is a choice that you have as policymakers to decide where that delegated authority moves to through your county manager to the management side of things.
But, but then, there is, in effect, an incomplete communication if we look only at the strategic plan and we don't iterate what's in... I mean, because I love your spreadsheet. And if we're communicating with our strategic plan to our stakeholders and ourselves, this is what matters to us. What's being worked on should be included in that, as a subsidiary in action now still matters, I think. Okay.
Matt, I think, I was, Commissioner Webb first, and then Commissioner Baines.
Well, to me, that's what budgeting is about. Budgeting is about...
I want a communication document, ma'am, not a budget.
No, but you have to pay for that communication document.
Look, distinct, distinct. So, so what we're developing here, if I can just carry this through, because I think it's an important distinction. If we're looking at our strategic plan, we use that to communicate to everybody what we're doing. If part of what we are doing relates to that strategic plan, because we've already begun it, or it's part of it related to that, that's distinct from the budget, which is, that's a whole nother thing.
I'm sorry, I don't...
Yeah.
I believe that budgets are an expression of the policy and action issues of a governing body. And if we don't give our staff the resources to accomplish the action items, then we are not being consistent with our policy framework.
Agreed, but they're distinct. I'm just talking about communication document. And I mean concise communication document, because that budget is not, is not a concise, clearly understood communication document. We're, we're agreed, we just have different ways of parsing it out, down the line.
Commissioner Baines?
I think what she's seeking is an implementation plan. How are we gonna implement these overhead goals? When she's, that's actually the direction I was going, was the strategic, the strategic plan is great, but how is it gonna be implemented? And I think, I could be incorrect, but I think that that's what she's seeking, is taking this from strategic to implementable. And then, how is the county going to address each of these issues? So that we have full communication, full circle.
Well, I would say, Commissioner, to say, part of the next, part of the discussion here will be some of those action plans, and then off those action plans, then staff develops implementation plans, and we develop timelines. It's not dissimilar to that spreadsheet that I sent out, that has all the projects on it. It actually says what phase in the development process are we, you know, a description of what the status is. So, we will put together a plan, so it's the strategy, it's the actions, and then there's all the implementation. As you can imagine, the implementation gets pretty deep quickly. And I'm just gonna use one example, and that's microhousing. So, microhousing is a great concept. From my conversations with the cities, they agree that it's, it would be a great step forward, but then you think, okay, wow, all the detail falls a little bad. And you get into the site, and you get into the funding, you get into what nonprofit exists that can actually implement it, caretake it, administer it, evolve it, sell it. And then, what are the roles of the governments? The city roles differ from the county role. And all that happens, that's at the implementation level. So, those are the things that I'm, I'm very involved in and very considerate of. But from the strategic plan, the action item might be microhousing, and then we might have a timeline, and then I'll just be updating your board about, about where are we, what are the barriers? Because like with microhousing, I will reach out to the commissioners and have you help us, because there's a political... Because there's a political element to this that requires you, that I'm not in a position to really address myself. And so, not that people aren't polite to me and friendly, but it's much more useful and helpful to have you speak. So, so I think that there's gonna be a lot of detail underneath this. But part of my job is to protect you from some of that detail and just give you updates so that you know where we are. It's kind of like subtle ways of performance, doesn't it? A lot of detail...
We finally got it done.
There's a lot of detail, but we don't wanna always get the board too ensconced in the detail and just deliver for you, so.
Brief aside here, I'm working, I've worked a little bit on this, I'm working with a couple of us right now. And the level of discussion that you're having is not common among boards. In other words, the, the knowledge about the distinction between the governance part and the management part, the, the policy part, the implementation, this is, you understand this stuff. And I, I agree with Don, which is, there is that line, but there's, it's never, there's a cycle going back and forth. As, because you, in, in the concept of performance measures, you may adopt a policy at a very high level of, you know, microhousing policies or something like that. And Don, they say, I don't know exactly what that means, but it's okay with me and we'll get enough budget to do it. But then, either you don't adopt a budget, that's your problem. Or you adopt a budget, but other stuff comes up and Don can't get at it. And at the end of the year, there's an evaluation, or even before the end, what did we get done on microhousing? And if we didn't get anything done, why didn't we get anything done? And do we still care about it? So that is, you know, it's not like performance measures are all on the management side and the operations side are all on the board's side. It's this, and I, and I think you understand all that. And I think that is the understanding that will allow the staff to put together a plan that I think will be able to do.
Well, and if I can just, I mean, I think it's important to kind of sometimes reflect upon what is different about toxic accounting right now. And, because if you sit in my chair, one of the things that you really see as, as an essential is this alignment between, in my case, the county manager and the board. Because we can't get this work done if we're disaligned. And we can't get this work done if we're not overtly supportive of one another. Now, what anybody says to me in our one-on-ones is free game, and I'm always happy to hear it however you want to tell me. The good thing about this board is there's no shrinking violence, which is good. But I think that, that what it comes down to is all of us knowing that we're, we're in this together. I mean, there is not a political side of the organization and administrative side. I mean, there are, because we have different goals. But there's not, because we are the county. I mean, and so the more we stay aligned, which is why we go through this process. We go through this process because we understand that the alignment matters. And some of these issues are big issues. And if, it is, it is powerful when we go to the city and we talk about microhousing and we know that the board is, is with us. We know that, that, that there's political energy behind it, there's resources behind it. That makes all of our jobs so much easier. And that doesn't happen everywhere. To kind of Terry's point, there is a lot of good, really good things happening here that I don't know that we will stop and think about. A lot of what we take for granted right now, even though it's not perfect, a lot of what we take for granted right now doesn't happen everywhere. Just to have these conversations, to know that I can call a commissioner and talk about fraud and we're talking about child abuse, or talk about, I mean, that is how we get things done. So I just wanna say, I just want to recognize that, because that is what makes this happen. If we're not aligned, you can, none of this matters, because it's not gonna get done, so.
So.
I just wanna point out the timetable. Am I gonna keep this on schedule?
Yeah, I have a hard out at 12:30. I have another meeting I have to go to, too. So, I mean, I'm just letting everybody know.
Thank you, Mark. So the, so the role of iterative feedback as we're going through the process, so we can true ourselves up, I think that's a part of this. And I don't know that we've called it out specifically, it's a process procedural issue, but I'd like that in there somehow, in the, in the awareness that it's iterative. If there are barriers that staff is experiencing that we can help, if there's feedback we're getting that should inform what staff is doing, so that that is dynamic and comprehensive and effective.
Amanda, you had a hand up before, is there anything?
Uh, it's okay.
Okay, good. Okay. So I'd like to move on to activity number two, part two of objectives. And so here's the exercise. First of all, a reminder, everything said to this point and on the wall is advisory. There, no votes have been, no real votes have been made. And in fact, this next exercise are not really final votes either. They're gonna be, if you look at the exercise, then it'll be a final vote. Now what you're gonna do, you now have 20 dots, but you all have the same colors. And, let's see, I don't know which is which, Amanda, which, which one is first and which is...
Um, ones that have a one or a two.
Okay, great.
Blue is first priority, and orange is second.
Great, okay. So that blue is, is the first, okay. So blue, you've got, you've, you still have 20 dots, but now you've got 10 and 10. And the reason for that is because that is about the number that we think we can work with. Now, it doesn't mean that we're gonna end up with 10 in first place and 10 second priority. If, if we get the dots up there and there's kind of a spread and it looks like they're 12 or 13, that's fine, too, and Don's gonna help with that exercise at the end. But right now, we wanna see you work in the right-hand side, look at the left-hand side, and think about what Don said, and remind yourself of what people are thinking, and then put your votes up there. And then, once we do that, we'll consolidate that and come back for a discussion of what we're in. And, you know, hope that now things, some of the spread starts to get a little bit less and things start to consolidate. Are there any questions about the exercise?
Well, I would assume since we're kind of consolidating some of these, that we probably don't need to do all 10 of each one, or do you think we should be doing?
No, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like you to go ahead and put...
Put all 10.
Put all, well, it would be, consider it this way, commissioners. If you were working all by yourself, there were no other commissioners, and Don's assignment to you is, okay, your job to pick these out, what are the 10 things that we're gonna work on as tier one and 10 on tier two? That's what you're doing.
Okay.
And then, after you see what everybody else does, then you'll figure out how to...
Gotcha.
How to move that stuff around. And as I say, it might not end up with 10, that's fine, too.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, then that's the exercise. Try to do that in five minutes. I still want you to come back and summarize it. And we still have enough time to get something about actions after we get that done.
Do you want it orange or tier two, and the orange is how you want this? Or do you have a real pattern or follow?
Well, it'd be easier for me if you put the orange in, in tier two, in the second column. Then, I mean, just visually, it will, it will be easier for me to find out.
It's okay. Go, go with it.
I think everyone shot, it does, it's a good one. I'm just sharing with you. Can you photoshop it? See, they can. How do you photoshop?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. She just turned around and went, do something. That was a good try, boss. Yeah.
How are you? Bad. See, you're a person, too.
See, you do.
I can see you. Paul's...
I'm just... You know what I mean? It's like, okay, I think, that's, that's what I know. I'm starting like teaching teachers. I decided that all she wasn't doing.
Okay, good.
So, if I put something as a second tier, does it detract from the first tier? Does it, and, you know, value the place?
Well, the first tier is overall, it's a lot of the, the second one is completely just a form. So it's not obligated to be the first one.
There you go. Why not? Thank you for doing that. I'm like, I don't, at this point.
Yeah, I have a meeting tomorrow.
I have to teach science, so, you know. Otherwise, I know that witchcraft. So, I was like, I told my boss, I said, well, so 15 minutes, they're all yours. The bar. I'm gonna give my tips to you.
Okay. We're going to just a little bit, you know, I'm just, I'm just quickly, and then turn it back to you. Here's, here's my summary. First of all, remember that you have only 10 blue dots. If everybody felt that each of these was equally important, that would mean that there, you could only put on two blue dots on each page. So you're, you're not going to see, if you see a cluster of three or four dots, that's pretty significant at this point. So, let's see what we got. So here's governance. And we've got, every, every one of these has four votes on it. Two first place, two tier one votes, and two tier two votes. And there's nothing above. So just as a starting point, this, these are the ones that we really think we want. And since they're all actually on the votes, they're all about equal importance at a starting point. Over here, you see the same hierarchy here with the addition of, of, of this one, I don't know what else I have to say, but there's one first place vote here. This one, we've already talked about, we've got two votes here, and we talked about that possibly being very similar to, or it could be able to be even taller than this, which has five of these. So this one can be handled this way. So the outlier on this one is this one up here, you might have talked about. Economic development, really strong, I'm reading up here on these two. And then, and then these other two, one is workforce housing. But we did talk about the possibility that workforce housing, whether, exactly how it works, I'm not sure, but increasing workforce housing could be part of, you know, a housing thing that's, that's over here when these two get consolidated. And, and then this one down here, the toolkit, which is your discussion last time, and several people giving this a second priority. So, and, you know, so second priority, that probably makes sense where first priority, first tier probably doesn't make it. Here, again, pretty clear description of what's up in the first category and what would be in the second category. And here, same thing. So this is, this is laying out pretty cleanly with a couple of, with a couple of outliers to talk about. And in my opinion, if you wanted to move on, this is close enough to consensus with the staff to work with. But if you want to have some discussion about it, then we can do that. And we still have time for the, the last exercise.
What is the last?
Oh, the, the last exercise is, is taking these tier one items, and we've got a tier one here, three, six, eight, 10, 12, you know, or 13, 13. That's where we want to be, one between 10 and 13, 10 and 15 on tier one. And so, we're in good shape. And then we can see what, how many other tier twos can be on there. The next exercise is to take the tier one items, and I'm gonna say the 13 that I just pointed out, and put them up, put up a board and say, is there anything specific you wanna tell staff about actions that you wanna see in there? Because it's one thing to say, for example, I don't know, this one. Well, that's what we say, some of these are transitive, less specific. Relationships to other entities. So we look at that and say, well, what, what does that mean exactly? You know, it could be any number of staff say... And what I'm going to do, while Amanda is doing the same thing electronically, is I'm going to listen to what you have to say, and it could be that you, that, that they're not as specific, in which case, that's okay, under staff overcome. But what we've got up here as the objectives, we've got the first, second, and third, so we've got, we've got the objective of, uh, communication and engagement, uh, the objective of, uh, operational sustainability plan, and the, well, and then the third one farther down, uh, relationship with other entities. So, are there, just, anybody can say anything they want to, and you might, the, the sentence might be, make sure you pay attention to, and as Commissioner Thompson just did, when we get to, uh, several items we were talking about before, relationship with others, is make sure that you can talk about travel costs. That's all I'm trying to do right now, is to see if there's anything, uh, like that that you want to tell us about.
Okay, John. Micro housing.
Well, are you looking for agreement amongst the board, or are you just looking for us?
No, I agree with the board. This, this is a brainstorm exercise. If you look at it, say, make sure you pay attention to this. And we're not going to do any more. After I get this list, we're going to write it down, and it's going to be advisory to staff. We're not going to come, there's no more exercise today, I'm trying to give you to prioritize those.
All right. I did want to just mention, before we circle down, this is the Westport ferry access road. Um, it's on our plate, well, it's on my plate right now, but it'll be on the board's plate very soon, and so I, I just don't want it to fall off of the plate.
It's on the project list, so do you think it's not on next year's strategic plan list? It's on the project.
Okay. I just, we need resolution, whatever the.
We need resolution.
Perfect.
We need resolution.
Okay. Anything? Actually, you know what? I'm going to, Amanda is there writing this down electronically, so in order to move this along, I'm going to just leave this up here as an example, but just to start rattling them off, and then we'll move on to the next one. Anything else on governance? And we can, actually, now that Amanda's moving around, Amanda has to keep moving the charts up and down. You got anything on any of these five that you want to tell us? And Amanda will get it into my plate. Amanda, I'm overstating your, your goal here.
A little bit.
Okay.
We're talking and we just.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, anything, anything else that you want to tell us about? Either programs that you care about, things to watch out for?
Are you just randomly, or are you still on governance?
I am on governance, but I'm looking at the clock, and I don't want to be too late, so if you, if you've got something on any of these.
For Amanda.
Here, here, well, here's where we're drawing the line, sort of. We've said that these are, these are the ones that are probably, that are probably going to make it to, at least the, the draft, draft list as tier, as tier one. So, is there anything about these? On any of these, what do you want to tell us about?
I want to have a budget item to send, um, the board members to Ellensburg for the economic development training, if it still goes on there. And it, it didn't rise to tier one, but if we're looking for budget implications, because that's what I always think about, um, economic development training for the board.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah. It didn't, it's, but it's.
Okay. This is just a note, I mean, this isn't in the strategic plan necessarily.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
It's just, it's just a budget note I'm trying to put into the process.
Okay. So, this whole exercise is just really about anything you think staff should be sensitive to as we take the objectives and start getting into the action plans. Just anything that you think we should.
Puzzled. Just go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. I just, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think that, um, we're ready for actionable for childcare. Um, so, between, you know, the group that we're, well.
Well, in, in, in our, we will reference that in the actual.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a budget note for that?
Yes, it's part of the handbook.
It is, yes.
Okay. But you're, you got it.
And it's also part of communication. So.
Yeah. I mean, that's along those lines. I got to make sure that some of the things that we were talking about, that were subsumed in some of these, you know, travel here, broadband, uh, I, I, I can just maybe, maybe it's not that I just want to get the hell out of here, but, but I do. But, um, I'd kind of like to hear back from the staff about these. Now that we have said, these are our priorities, um, I'd like the thoughts of all the people who just grew about, okay, how do we do this? What, you know, what are the things that our staff needs? It's a lot of the stuff that's in your matrix, though, is, is all, you know, a lot of that's out here. So, I.
So, do you want me to talk a little bit?
No. No, I'm just saying that I, that in terms of, I'd love for the staff to be able to kind of sleep with this a little bit and then react.
Well, I think that that's fair. I think that, and that was going to happen either way, is that the goal is for us is to take the objectives, which your board has done a great job of identifying, and then, then we will, at a staff level, look at those and say, what are some of the actions? And some of them, we already know, because we've been working on them. And childcare as an example, there's going to be a plan that we'll just plug into. Um, but there are others, that, that staff will have a conversation, we'll come back, and then you're going to have to kind of reality check us, to make sure that, that what staff interpreted is going to meet your expectation when it comes to the outcome. And most of them aren't very nebulous, I mean, most of these are pretty concrete, but, like, I just want, like, when we talk about countywide, um, communication and engagement, that covers a lot of ground. I mean, I wish that was like, uh, one foot amount of ground, but it's really like 100 miles or up around. And so, so I would like, you know, staff to certainly talk about this, and, you know, one action outcome will be having a communication plan, and then a second one may be an engagement plan, because they're two separate things. Um, and so, they do interrelate, but they're separate. And so, I think we need to talk about that at a staff level, and say, okay, how do these interrelate? And then we're going to go to the board and say, is this what you need?
Okay. So, when we're talking about, I'm glad, and staff has done an excellent job of engaging a certain part of our population. There's a whole lot of other people who, who have not been engaged, because they don't have the time, or the energy, or the awareness, or the, maybe even the motivation, still need to be heard from, still need to be considered. I'm thinking of less affluent, I'm thinking of, um, that whole diversity of cultures, I'm thinking a whole bunch of working people we haven't heard from. So, when staff looks, if you can, can consider how to have a broader engagement and not just affluent, educated, involved, kind of expert citizens, I want, I want more.
Okay. Then I've got a specific suggestion.
Okay.
I'd love us to do this survey. I think that in Oregon, 2022, we need to be doing this.
And that, all the commissioners, that will be part of the communication, part of the.
That's what I'm saying. There are forces that do things. And if you're not going to let us out here, seven seconds early, then.
I'm trying to get through this. I'm just saying.
That's good. That's hope.
And I mean, can I say something else before people?
Talk back.
This, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but I am really happy with this work. I, I am delighted at the consensus, the involvement of this process. I mean, I, I'm just real, really delighted. Um, I, I, I think it's great work on the part of the staff. I loved the involvement of the staff in this, that I loved it in the survey. You could tell that it was just, it was very rich.
Come on, Pam, please.
No, I agree. I completely agree with you.
Just, I'm just, I, I mean, I could walk out of here right now and be really, really happy with, with what we've done over these few months, but resulting this morning in an incredible amount of consensus.
Yeah, I agree. Absolutely.
Maybe, just to, to maybe say that. This is probably getting us to the point where what might be most helpful is that, is that, is that we will take the staff, at the staff level, of coming up with those actions, we'll present it to your board, and then you can course correct us, you can add, and then we'll be ready to then actually adopt. And so, so we will do that, if that makes the most sense, because I don't think in the next 15 minutes that we'll necessarily be able to get much deeper.
So, so, but when we're looking at this, are we going to have, at the state, they call them policy option packages, are we, I want to make sure that we financially budget for this this year, so that we can start at the beginning of the new fiscal year.
So, I would say that in most of, of these instances, we're already pretty, pretty well situated, and we will identify those that, that we may not be, and then, and then we can course correct in terms of the budget also.
Okay.
But I think with a lot of these, we already have placeholders in the budget, so.
I mean, both of you just basically said what I was wanting to say was that, you know, I really need staff's response before I can provide feedback, um, because it may end up potentially a new employee that needs to go into the budget process. It may, like, all of these goals may end up having to develop into, you know, potentially new staff. I don't know. So, it was just kind of, thank you. I just need that before I can give you.
We will give you that. We, we will give you that.
So, another question, as we're talking about these policy, we're looking at interviewing all these, do we actually scrub against a state policy or mandates that made some of our ads, and we can, it was action blind, at a state level, or did we scrub these previously?
Well, one of the things that we will have to address is that in this, in the short session, there were several mandates handed down to the government. So, we are going to have to deal with some of that.
Yeah.
True.
And that's something maybe, because once again, staff feedback could say, ooh, wait a minute, that's bill 4488.
Yep.
So, what I would say, Commissioner, is that there's very few issues that we own all the cars, and so certainly there is a level of complexity with really all of them, but there are some that are squirrely in the county's chair about, about what our jurisdictional response is going to be, but there's some, like crisis stabilization, that's something that no rural county can go alone, in fact, no urban county can either. And so, there are technicals, like with that one, housing is another one. In order to generate affordable housing, it's a partnership with the state through allocation of grants and, and debt tax credits.
Yeah.
And so, but I think the more we are ready to take advantage of those opportunities, the better. Part of what we've been hamstrung by is that we're not always ready for the opportunities that are going to come up. And so, part of this is just prepare ourselves so that when the opportunity comes up, we are ready. And so, and I think we, we're getting closer all the time for that, so.
And there've been a couple recommendations that maybe the sooner we get out of here, the more agreement we can have. So, I'm going to go to, I'm on 1215 summary of today's progress, Don's already given some of that, so maybe we can. The first thing I want to say is, if you look at the best practices, and the literature on best practices for boards, and even if you look at your prior, previous strategic plan and your principles, you'll find terms like, the ones I want to emphasize now are evidence-based decision-making, transparency, documentation, et cetera. And I just want to tell you, the reason that that shows up is so that you, you don't have something where, you know, one, one person in a body is saying, no, I, I got elected to do this one thing, and that's the one thing I want to do, and I, I don't want any other board to say anything else, I just want to do this one thing. It is, another thing that shows up in that literature is one board, one vote. And so, you don't individually have, you know, 20% of power, you collectively have 100% of power. And what you have to, and where you are now, I think, is in a process where you may, I'm going to call it consensus, in that you can live with what's up there. You may agree with most of it, there's some that you wish weren't there, but you can live with. And, and if that's not true, then there would have been a different vote on it, and even then, if the vote went 3, 3, 2, what you would say is, you could continue to disagree with that objective, but you could not disagree with the board's decision, that the board had made an appropriate decision. There was, and now what you have, when you talk to your constituents or your staff, is you have this, you have, that you started way back here with a survey, a first round list of E3, another round list, another round, another round, narrowing, narrowing, discussion, discussion, and we're done. This is where we ended up, and I think it was an incredible job. You know, you just look at that, and you just see the spread come together. So, thank you for that. The staff has what it needs to do, what is now its job. When we ask you about programs, you, it's not appropriate for you to do programs. You have ideas about what might work, but ultimately, that's Don, your, your county managers and staff's job to say, well, let's think about how we do it somehow. Are there certain legal obstacles? Have we considered the fact that this might be redundant because somebody else is doing that? And they will do that, and we'll come back to you, and then we'll tell you. But pretty much, I think, what I'm picking up from your county manager is, this is the list that, uh, the county staff can work with. And that's what we're trying to get to. So, the next steps now are the ones we talked to you about, we'll be back to you. I'm not sure exactly when, it's, it'd be probably at least a month, and it would, should not be much more than that, because we want to get to a place where at least you're, we have something in a draft format in front of you, so it can be useful to budget committees as they're looking. And I'm going to stop there with that as something, and seeing that, and just turn over to you and Commissioner, any of the commissioners, if they have final comments. There was, and now what you have, when you talk to your constituents or your staff, is you have this. You have, that you started way back here with a survey, a first round list of the three, another round list, another round, another round, narrowing, narrowing, discussion, discussion, and we're done. This is where we ended up. And I think it was an incredible job. You know, you just look at that and you just see the spread come to give. So thank you for that. The staff has what it needs to do, what is now its job. When we ask you about programs, you, it's not appropriate for you to do programs. You have ideas about what might work, but ultimately, that's Don, your county managers and staff's job to say, well, let's think about how we do this. Are there certain legal obstacles? Have we considered the fact that this might be redundant because somebody else is doing that? And they will do that and will come back to you and then will tell you. But pretty much, I think, what I'm picking up from your county manager is this is what that the county staff can work with. And that's what we're trying to get to. So the next steps now are the ones we talked to you about. We'll be back to you. I'm not sure exactly when it's, it'd be probably at least a month, and it should not be much more than that, because we want to get to a place where at least you're, we have something in a draft format in front of you, so it can be useful to budget committees as they're looking at one. And I'm going to stop there with that as something and seeing then, and just turn over to you and Commissioner, any of the commissioners if they have a final comments.